Good evening. I now call the March 20th, 2024 Meeting of the Hampton City School Board to order. Ms. Charbonneau, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Afanjah?
Here.
Dr. Banks Gray?
Here.
Ms. Cherry?
Here.
Mr. Kilgore?
Here.
Mr. Samuels?
Present.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Here.
Dr. Mason?
Please let the record reflect that all board members are present with the exception of Dr. Mason, who is out due to work obligation. Joining us this evening, we have Aria McCoy, an eighth grader from Sims Middle School, to lead us in the pledge.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, Aria, you do have something to share with us this evening, is that correct?
Yes, I do.
Perfect.
I would be reading "The Rose That Grew From The Concrete" by Tupac Shakur. Did you hear about the rose that grew from the creek, the crack in the concrete? Proving nature's law is wrong that it learned to walk without having feet. Funny it seems, but by keeping its dreams, it learned to breathe fresh air. Long live the rose that grew from the concrete when no one else cared.
Very good. Great job. Great job, Ms. McCoy. Now, we also, who was that by again?
That was by Tupac Shakur.
Tupac Shakur. So, we have one of our board members that is notorious for quoting Tupac any given time she can, and that's Ms. Ann Stevens Cherry, so I know she really appreciated that. So, thank you once again. That was amazing. So, you're in the eighth grade, correct?
Yes, I am.
Correct. Okay. Now, what is your favorite, favorite, favorite subject at Sims?
I would say it'd be math.
It's math. Fantastic. What? Awesome. Now, do you have any family members or support staff that come with you this evening from your school? And if you do, could you have them stand and you can announce them, please, or introduce them for us?
Yes, ma'am. I have my mom. I have Dr. Jenkins. I have Mr. Perry, Ms. Talu, and Mr. Horton.
I'd like to thank each of you to come out and to support her, and we appreciate y'all taking time in your evening to come out. And thank you once again. We appreciate you.
Thank you.
Any questions from board members?
So, I have one question. So, have you decided on your academy and high school for next year?
No, not yet.
Okay. Just take some time over the summer to reflect and have fun this summer, okay?
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Thank you once again. I would like to recognize Councilman Chris Moeman that's in the audience with us this evening. Thank you, sir. The next item of business is Item 1.03, Adoption of the Agenda. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
It has been moved by Mr. Samuels and seconded by Ms. Jackson Afanjah that we approve the agenda as presented. Any discussion from our board members? Hearing none. Ms. Charbonneau, would you please call for the vote?
Ms. Afanjah?
Aye.
Dr. Banks Gray?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next, we'll move into our recognition section on the agenda. I will now turn the meeting over to Ms. Kelly Goral.
Good evening and thank you Vice Chair Dr. Banks Gray, members of our school board, Superintendent Dr. Haynes, and members of our Hampton City Schools family. At this time, Ms. Jackson Afanjah, would you please proceed to the microphone onstage to assist with tonight's recognition? You ready? All right. So, tonight, we gather to honor the student athletes of Hampton High School, particularly the boys' basketball team for the 23-24 season. Coach Eric Brown, could you, along with your coaching staff and the basketball team, please join me up front on either side of the podium? Come on up. You're gonna start down with me first, and then you'll go back up to the stage in a moment. You're good. You stop right here, go that way. Perfect. All right. I'm feeling kinda short right now, even in my heels, so. All right. Well, let's begin with our recognition. We're gonna talk about the regional championship game. On Friday, February 23rd, Hampton High School defeated Churchland High School with a score of 60 to 48 to win the Class A, sorry, Class 4 Region A Championship Game. Let's give them a round of applause. All right. Keep those hands close together because next they played in the state's quarterfinals on February 27th at Heritage High. They took on Dinwiddie High School. The Crabbers had another win with a score of 68 to 54. Another round of applause. All right. Not finished. Then they faced off in the state semifinals on March the 1st, again at Heritage High. The Crabbers pulled off with the win and defeated, is it Verina? Verina. Hampton's much easier to say. Verina with a score of 51 to 49 to play for the Class 4 Boys Basketball State Championship for the first time in 12 years. Let's give them a big round of applause. All right. This is the most exciting one, and I had the pleasure of being there as well. So, it was really great seeing you young men kinda walk up because I was like, I recognize you, I recognize you, I recognize you. You all played great. So, the final game of the year for the Crabbers came on Friday, March the 8th, at VCU's Siegel Center in Richmond. Hampton played, and is it the Tuscorra? How do you say that one, Coach? Did I say that one right? Again, Hampton and Bethel are much easier to say, those type of names. Okay, Tuscorra Huskies, they are the Huskies, for the Class 4 State Championship Game. It was a nail-biter. It was, we were on the edge of our seats, and with a final score of 66 to 63, our Crabbers brought home the state championship. Let's give them a huge round of applause for that. And before these gentlemen come up onstage with Ms. Afanjah, I'd like to direct everyone's attention to the screen, and we're gonna view just a short video highlighting that championship game.
Very, very impressive. Coach Brown, would you and your team, please join me on the stage by the microphone? And as they come up, I'm very excited about tonight's recognition. Everyone here knows that I graduated from Hampton High School in 1993, when basketball was very, very, very exciting, because we were playing Allen Iverson for four years. And it was really exciting. So, we were always at the basketball game, so this is kinda nostalgic. Before I present the certificate, I would like to share a few more things about our Crabbers. The state championship is the sixth title for the program, and like Ms. Goral said, the first since 2012. The Hampton Boys team had only two losses this season. This hasn't happened in over 30 years. They had a 16-game winning streak, which is the longest in the modern era. I am privileged to represent our Chair, Dr. Mason, our Vice Chair, Dr. Banks Gray, the Hampton School Board, and our Superintendent, Dr. Raymond Haynes. It is with great pleasure that I present the team with a banner, commemorative coins for each member, and a certificate of achievement from Hampton City Schools in recognition of your outstanding performance and your success in securing the Class 4 State Championship. And the certificate reads as such, Certificate of Achievement from the Hampton City School Board, congratulations. This certificate is proudly presented to Hampton High School Boys Basketball, Class 4 VHSL State Champions, 2023-2024, Coach Eric Brown, March 20th, 2024, signed by Mr. Dr. Raymond Haynes and Dr. Richard Mason. Before we do the banner and pass out the coins, Coach Brown, would you like to say a few words?
Thank you for having us. Long season. I thought the guys, you know, really showed out as far as how they played, how they stuck together. I thought one of the early interviews I had, I think we played at Menchville, and we had a comeback win that night, and a guy on the news asked me, he's like, why you think, you know, we were able to come back? And I thought, most of all, it was our chemistry. These guys have been together, even when practice is over, they hang around in the locker room. Sometimes, we just leave them, we just leave them there. You know, we tell them to lock up. You know, they hang around the locker room, and they just enjoy being with each other. And that's a big part of winning. If you don't like each other off the court, it's gonna be hard to do things on the court. So, big part of how they perform was how together they are. And, you know, I thought that that showed in every win, it even showed when we lost, you know, the feud that they were. So, we're very proud of them as coaches at the school. We'd like to thank everybody, especially my administration, School Board again for having us. Last night, I thanked the players. I thanked them again. It's hard to find a group that are like-minded, you know, are like-minded in what they want as far as their goals. And I thought that they were like-minded for almost a year now, and they met the goal that they wanted to meet starting last summer. So, we're very proud of them. Thank you.
Thank you for those remarks, Coach. We're gonna roll the banner out, take a couple of pictures, and we're gonna pass out a coin to each one of the players and coaches and stay put for just a few minutes.
All right. We're gonna get a photo, so the banner needs to be centered in the middle, because it's not as long as how you all are standing. And I need the tallest in the back, even though I know all of you are pretty tall, so that I can see everyone for the picture. All right. I don't know if I can see the two in the back. There we go. There we go. All right. Peek in between. All right. Let's see. I'm having, over here, let's stagger just a little bit so I can see everybody on this side. All right. Are we ready? All right. On the count of three, say champs. One, two, three.
Champs!
That's it? That's all y'all got? You know, you did win the state championship. Let's try this one more time. On the count of three, say champs. One, two, three.
Champs!
That's a little better. All right. Thank you, guys.
One, just one second. One second. Before Coach Brown and his team resume their seats, we want to acknowledge Mr. Richard Fortune. Mr. Richard Fortune serves as the school division's athletics director, and we commend him for his dedicated efforts behind the scenes in support of our teams. Additionally, I would like to ask the Hampton High School administration, led by Executive Principal Hanif Majad, as well as Justin Vias, the school's athletic director, along with any family members, Coach Baker, colleagues, and other esteemed guests who have joined us tonight to stand and be recognized for their support of our Crabbers. Let's give Coach Brown and his coaching staff and our phenomenal student athletes another round of applause as they take their seats.
Good job, guys.
Yeah, that wasn't bad either.
Yeah. You got that 32 cent coming. You know that.
You were fast.
Dr. Banks Gray, that does conclude our recognition for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Goral. Appreciate that. Job well done, and congratulations once again. Do we have any comments from any of our board members?
I do. Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Before the Crabbers leave, I just wanna say a special congratulations to you all. I was not able to attend that game because I was having this sinus issue thing, which I'm still having, and Dr. Mason made it very clear he did not want me riding in the van with he and the superintendent coughing all over them. So, I said to him, you've got to call me or text me every 15 minutes on what's going on in that game. So, halftime, I was fine. I was in the Kroger grocery store after halftime, and that score got tight. And I can tell you, I ended up paying for fruit I did not buy. Because when he called me with that score, I was squeezing peaches and throwing them and lettuce against the wall. But I am so glad that you all won, because right after that, when I went to the BJ Roberts Behavioral Center naming, I saw Officer Genrette, who's a friend, and she said, my son is on that team. And I said, well, that's sweet. And then we opened the Daily Press, and he's standing there, holding the trophy. So, where's, where's Genrette's baby? Put your hand up. There you are. Okay. Well, congratulations to all of you Crabbers, and can't crush your crab. I love it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cherry. Congratulations, you all. Job well done. We appreciate you guys. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda, 3.01 Personnel Report, 2024-6, and 3.02 Minutes of the School Board Meeting of March 13th, 2024. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Jackson Afanjah and seconded by Dr. Woodhouse. Any discussion from board members? Hearing none. Ms. Charbonneau, can you please call for the vote?
Ms. Afanjah?
Aye.
Dr. Banks Gray?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
And Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Now, we move to the Superintendent and Staff Report, and for that, I will turn it over to our Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Raymond Haynes.
Thank you, Vice Chair Banks Gray, members of the board, Division Leadership Team in the Hampton community. Tonight, with pleasure, I want to provide updates to the Superintendent's recommended fiscal year 24-25 budget. This evening, Dr. Michael Thornton, our interim Chief Financial Officer, will provide a brief update on the state budget process to include an update we received just today from City Manager Mary Bunting. Additionally, as Dr. Thornton is coming forward or standing before us, I would like to reiterate to the viewing audience that should the division receive additional funding for the fiscal year 25, 24-25 budget, we will first look to revisit employee compensation for the coming school year and the area staff raises, as well as perhaps additional adjustments to the teacher salary scale. Dr. Thornton?
Thank you, Superintendent Haynes, Dr. Banks Gray, School Board members. Good evening. As Dr. Haynes mentioned, at this point, we have not received any updates from the state. Of course, the Conferes approved a budget, but it's pending the governor's signature, which, to date, many of you probably know, he has not signed it yet. So, we're waiting for that. Hopefully, it will be done, but it's, it's in their hands now. In terms of local revenue, we did receive an update, as Dr. Haynes mentioned, from the city administration regarding additional support in local contributions. On top of the 1.2 million preliminary planning, they're gonna provide an additional 1.9 to 2 million above that, bringing the total contribution from the city to 95 million, representing about a $3.2 million increase over the current year's local contribution. So, certainly, it goes without saying that Dr. Haynes and, of course, the School Board is appreciative of that ongoing support from the city. You happy to answer any questions you have?
Questions or comments from board members?
Vice Chair Banks, thank you. I don't have a question. I just have a comment in response to Dr. Haynes's recommendation. I hope it's a recommendation that with the new additional funds that we're gonna get, we're gonna make sure that we review the teacher scale, because that is important to demonstrate to our teachers that we're making an investment in that area, because that area has been kinda not been looked at until recently in the last four years. So, I'm very excited and happy that that continues to be on your agenda as it relates to one of the school board initiatives, as is recruitment and retention of teachers. So, I'm very excited that, you know, you and your executive team will be looking at that. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Samuels, Ms. Cherry.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do wanna point out one thing. I remember when the Superintendent presented his budget, he did say, if we were to get additional funds, he'd be looking at the possibility of increases in human capital. So, we were all, as a board, pleased to hear that. I do have a comment and a question, Dr. Thornton. The comment is, I am so glad that we are continuing that positive relationship with the city of Hampton, because, as I've said before, and as many board members have articulated, every city within the state of Hampton does not enjoy that relationship. And I think it's because those people on council understand, along with the city manager and others, that this school division is at the top of its game, doing what is best for children, every child, every day, whatever it takes. And they know that that's not a slogan, that that is a belief system. And we have proven it time and time again. And I think because of that, while the city can give us X number of funds, for them to go above and beyond speaks volume, not only to what we're doing as a division, but also to the leadership in this division. That's the comment. The question is this, with regard to the governor?
Yes.
Do we know when and if he attends, and this is for the public to understand, do we know if and when he intends to sign, and if he doesn't sign, what that means? Could you just give us a little scenario of what that would look like?
We do not know at this point. Of course, the General Assembly adjourned with a budget, but it's dependent upon the governor signing off on it. So, I'm not aware of if there's a particular target date that the governor has indicated he's gonna sign it. And if he does not sign it, then certainly, we would be where we were this time last year. I think it went right up to late spring, early summer, maybe. So, if it's not signed, then we would go with, we would ask the board to approve the budget with the one adjustment from the locality, any other additional investment that Dr. Haynes would recommend next week. And then it's just pending after that appropriation from the city. And then, of course, once the state budget is finally signed off on, then obviously, you all will come back together and make those necessary adjustments. There is a significant difference between what the governor's proposed budget included, which is the basis for Dr. Haynes and every other school division, probably in the Commonwealth, and what the General Assembly approved, and it's just a matter of how they're gonna reconcile the two.
I appreciate that, and that's the point that I wanna point it out, if you will, because to the public, it's just so confusing, and sometimes to us as well. But I wanna make sure that because of those nuances, that we're able to explain to the public what it could be or what it should be. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Dr. Thornton, for that explanation. Appreciate that.
Vice Chair Banks Gray, that concludes reports from the Superintendent.
Thank you, Dr. Haynes. Now, moving on, the next item on the agenda is deliberation, 5.01 2024-25 Proposed Student Fees. Is that, do we have any comments or questions? No? Okay. Moving on. Now, we move to items for action. 6.01 2024-25 School Calendar and 2025-26 Planned Calendar, excuse me. 6.02 Review of School Board Policy AA, School Division Legal Status. 6.03 Review of School Board Policy BDDD Quorum. 6.04 Review of School Board Policy BDDE Rules of Order. 6.05 Review of School Board Policy BFB, Policy Development, Evaluation, Approval and Dissemination. 6.06 Review of School Board Policy BHD, Board Member Compensation. 6.07 Review of School Board Policy BHE, School Board Member Libility Insurance. 6.08 Review of School Board Policy BJ, School Board Membership. 6.09 Review of School Board Policy CBB, Appointment of Term of Superintendent. 6.10 Review of School Board Policy CBD, Superintendent Contract, Compensation and Benefit. Benefits. Is it the will of the board to take this as a block, and if so, do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Okay. So, it has been moved by Ms. Jackson Afanjah and seconded by Dr. Woodhouse to have this as a block. Ms. Charbonneau, would you please call for the vote?
Ms. Afanjah?
Aye.
Dr. Banks Gray?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Okay. Moving on to the next item, which is a hearing of any delegation or presentation of any written communication or petitions. Ms. Charbonneau, would you please read the
Citizens are invited to address the school board on matters of public concern about the school division. Speaker forms are available prior to the start of the meeting. If you wish to address the school board, please complete the form and give it to the clerk by 6:45 PM on the day of the meeting. Each individual will have three minutes to speak. At the end of your time, you will hear a buzzer. All
At the end of your time, you will hear a buzzer. All comments should be directed to the school board. Speakers may not yield their time to another. Speakers should address the school board with decorum on policy issues. Comments shall relate to agenda items or manners germane to the business of the duties of the school board. Speakers' comments on individuals at their own risk of violating confidentiality laws and/or defaming the subject of their comments. Neither the school board, the superintendent, nor the school administration will respond publicly to any comments by speakers about individuals. Presentation of resolution, declarations, proclamations, manifestos, awards, or other similar documents not originated under the auspices of the school board or administration are prohibited, is prohibited during the public comment period. The audience is asked to be respectful of all speakers. Public comment is the school board's opportunity to listen to the speakers. Since our purpose is to hear from you, the board will not engage in dialogue with the audience or whomever is at the podium. Matters requiring a response will be directed to the superintendent for research and response. The superintendent may report back on such matters as subsequent business meetings, sessions as appropriate. The school board carefully considers your comments as we decide matters that are brought before us. We appreciate your attendance and your input.
Thank you, Ms. Charbonneau. This evening, I received three requests. First, I have Ms. Marita Frazier. And when each speaker comes to the podium, could you please state your address?
Good evening. Thank you.
Good evening. Marita Frazier, 2026 Winfrey Road, Hampton, Virginia, 23663. It's not on. Sorry. It's not going. It's not that one.
Ms. Frazier, you can go ahead and speak. You'll be fine. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, Dr. Haynes and the members of the school board. I am Marita Frazier, and I am coming to you on behalf of the Hampton Federation of Teachers Union. I am speaking to express my concern and advocate for the revision of Step 25 to Step 26 in the teacher pay scale. I am sure that you have received letters and emails of concern about this issue. As a member of this community, as well as a veteran teacher at Bethel High School, I believe that my fellow colleagues and I play an invaluable role in shaping the future of the students of this district. However, the current proposed teacher pay scale structure for Step 25 does not adequately reflect the dedication and hard work put forth by our educators. It is evident that highly qualified, experienced teachers are essential contribution to the success of our students and overall functioning of our educational system. We devote countless hours beyond the classroom, grading papers, preparing lesson plans, and engaging our students, parents, and colleagues. Yet many of the teachers struggle to make ends meet. It was our expectation that we received a pay increase for Step 25. In order to attract and retain highly qualified teachers, it is imperative that we address the issue of Step 25. Competitive salaries and comprehensive benefits not only reward our teachers for their hard work and commitment, but also a reflection of Hampton City Schools' loyalty and commitment to every child, every day, whatever it takes. Furthermore, fair and adequate compensation is crucial for maintaining morale and job satisfaction among our educators. When teachers feel valued and adequately compensated, I'm sorry, when teachers feel valued and are adequately compensated, there is a strong likelihood that they remain dedicated to their profession and excel in their roles. I urge the school board to prioritize the revision of Step 25 as a fundamental aspect of our district budgeting plan. By allocating resources towards keeping Step 25 teacher compensation, we not only support our educators, but also uphold the standards of excellence in education that our community strives to achieve. Thank you for your consideration in this important matter. It is imperative that we must be able to meet the goal, again, of every child, every day, whatever it takes. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Frazier.
I now, I'm sorry, I now have a letter of concern from other veteran teachers in the district. I don't know if it's got to reset the time or...
Did they sign up to speak this evening?
It was tag team.
Okay, but your actual time has been allotted.
Okay.
So it is expired.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you so much. Next speaker we have is Mr. Ryan Barber.
We're good. We think. Good evening, school board. My name is Ryan Barber. I reside at 215 Captain's Court in Hampton, Virginia. I am the proud parent of my oldest son Liam, who is currently in the dual-language program at Langley. I came here tonight to once again applaud you guys for taking the initiative and having the courage to pilot such a wonderful program, the dual-language program at Langley. Also to refresh you guys on some facts. Harvard University, the National University of Health, and many other universities across the country have been studying the results of dual-language education for children for over 20 years. The increased social and emotional development, the increased ability to concentrate, problem-solve, and focus, higher self-esteem, which means lower depression, cognitive flexibility, executive function, task switching, all outperforms monolinguals by 80% that these studies have shown. But this program extends way beyond language skills. Cultural connections, strengthening identity creates a sense of belonging and inspires cultural curiosity. Global opportunities, travel, career prospects, and the ability to pick up a third or fourth language much easier. Favorable attitudes towards diversity and multiculturalism. Basically, this shapes the brain for a lifetime of long benefits. Now, I understand that you guys have to make tough decisions all the time that affect the schooling of our children here in Hampton. And I also understand that most decisions are being made with pros and cons. And over the 20 years of research by the top universities in this subject, not one negative effect has been shown by any subject in a dual-language educational system. No cons. All over the country, dual-language is popping up in many states. It is also medicine for the brain. It protects against cognitive decline, dementia, and Alzheimer's. With all that being said, we know that the future of this community is the youth of this community. And as a dual-language parent, community continues to grow at Langley, the consensus is always the same. Myself and the parents that I have had conversations with believe that this program could be a cornerstone for a foundation that will strengthen our city for a long time. The last time I spoke with you guys, I told you a story about Liam's mother and I deciding to gamble and roll the dice on a program that we knew nothing about. We still feel like we hit the jackpot on this program. So my request to you guys tonight as a proud parent and a lifelong Hamptonian is that the dual-language program not only continue to expand at Langley, but also to grow and to share this jackpot with the rest of the elementary schools in our city. I ask that you please continue to stay ahead of this fail-safe trend and lead the expansion of dual-language learning, which will strengthen our children and our cities in the future. Thank you so much, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Barber. Our next speaker is Mary C. Green. Good evening.
Good evening. I am Mary C. Green. I reside at 103 Harvest Way in Yorktown, Virginia, 23693. I appreciate you, Dr. Banks Gray, and the rest of the board members. Dr. Haynes, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak this evening about the proposed budget. It seems that it has affected others as well. I also am coming in concern with steps between 24 and 25. And there's also a bit of a disparity, not as great, between 25 and 26. Noticing that a teacher at Step 24, this current pay scale, is making $66,000, and a teacher on this current pay scale at Step 25 is making $75,000. My anticipation as a teacher moving on to Step 25 next year was that I would also be receiving a similar compensation. Noticing with the proposed budget that $75,000 at Step 25 this year is being proposed down to $68,000 for next year. I just don't feel that it's fair that the teacher that's at Step 25 teaching next to me this year is making 77, and at that point next year, I'm only going to be making 68. I do appreciate the fact that we are still getting that 2% raise. I mean, I understand that. I appreciate that you're still giving us that raise. I realize there's more money coming from the state. It sounds like there's possibly some more money coming from the city. And, Dr. Haynes, I appreciate you making that statement during the board meeting today, that your focus is on using that extra money to adjust our teacher pay scales. And I appreciate that our board members are also backing that up, making sure that, appreciating Dr. Haynes' comments that that's where that money is going to go. So thank you so much in giving your appreciation and attention to that pay scale. And it sounds like all of your focus is in the right direction, and I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to speak this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Green. Moving on to our next section, which is information. The next meeting of the Hampton City School Board will take place March 27, 2024, here at Jones Magnet Middle School. We will begin sharply at 6:30. Is there any information, 8.02, to come from members of the board? Dr. Haynes?
Thank you, Vice Chair Banks Gray. Today, we hosted our very first Connect Ed Tour. We invited community partners from a variety of industries to participate in a site visit that highlighted the academies at each one of our high schools. So students from Bethel, Hampton, Kickitane, and Phoebus shared their academy experiences with current and future partners. We were pleased to host the Executive Vice President and Provost from Hampton University, Dr. Joanne Hayes-Bird, on this tour, as well as community members and business leaders from a variety of organizations. I would be remiss if I didn't mention the involvement and participation and being thoroughly immersed in the whole process. City Manager Bunting was with us this morning, and she had a brief departure and came back and finished the tours with us as well. So she is an integral part of the work that we're doing around the academies of Hampton and transforming how we teach and learn and making that focus on the portrait of a Hampton graduate. So certainly want to thank City Manager Bunting for her support as well. And then, as a reminder, we are looking forward to tomorrow, which is when our Project-Based Learning Division Showcase will be held. Since the beginning of this school year, students at Bethel, Hampton, Kickitane, and Phoebus have engaged in project-based learning activities with the goal of making an impact on the greater Hampton community. A school-level competition was held in February where teams of students competed against one another in front of a panel of judges. Several teams from each school have advanced to the Division Showcase and will compete against each other tomorrow. That concludes information from the Superintendent, Vice Chair Banks Gray.
Thank you, Dr. Haynes. I would like to wish this evening, Ms. Anne Stephens Cherry, a very happy birthday. I know you have a lot of support out there, and I know everybody is coming in, and you're getting those well wishes remotely as well, but we wanted to say happy birthday to you, ma'am.
I appreciate that. Thank you. Yet another year.
Awesome. With no other business, we are adjourned.